All right, call the meeting to order at 1:02. This is a open meeting to discuss certain items regarding capital improvement projects, Parks Master Plan. First, you know, I'm going to see your flag here. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Berman is absent. Trustee Blueheart.
Here.
McNeil is absent. Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Beasley.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Mayor Gergen.
Present. All right. First off, I see there's obviously some people with a public, I didn't have a sheet out for public comments, so does anybody that want to make any public comments? Oh, yeah, anyone sign up for a public comment? Maybe you want to sign up for a public comment. All right, so we'll move on to the first item. So Parks Director Mary Quilty has been working with third-party.
Hitchcock Design.
Hitchcock Design to look at a Park Master Plan. She recently presented a few of the staff members and the board, a couple of their proposals. So just briefly before we get into the big other capital items, I want to make sure that these potential park proposals are in our mindset while we're thinking about how they're going to be built.
And the memo is in the packet of material in front of you.
So what you, the Parks Master Plan is a guiding tool for you to know what is important to your residents in Antioch. The way it was constructed or the information was gathered, they had an online survey, they had two community meetings, and then they had stakeholders' meetings. And of those stakeholders, one of them was educators in Antioch, business and historical people in Antioch, service organizations, athletic groups, and homeowners associations. And with all that information that was compiled, this is what you see in front of you, what is there, what is important to them. Going forward, now we need to prioritize of these items which, you know, get on the capital plan or what we can do going forward in the next five years. But it's a guiding tool of what is important and what needs to be done. A lot of it is based on like the lifetime of a playground, the lifetime of a park, parks, shelters, green space. So our next step with Hitchcock is to decide what we want to prioritize first and what is important.
And so when we sat down with Mary, a couple of items that I remember coming to my mind were obviously Centennial Park was the big number. We figured out how that would, that what year that would happen and how we'd start stating to that project. Sawmill was another one that I saw on there that was significantly less than.
The sawmill wheel, yes, needs to be replaced most definitely.
Do you remember what that was?
Dennis, do you, the sawmill wheel? We don't really have it because it's kind of a custom.
Yeah, it's a unique piece that would have to be most likely put together by a mill or a contractor that has a mill because the pieces of lumber are so large. So it's a pretty unique piece. And, and so as we go through this process, I plan on having a evening meeting, a special meeting just for budget for the trustees and the department head. So some of these numbers, you know, are going to have to be written to the park's budget or the capital budget, so there's plenty for some of that. Do you remember the other wish list items that were on there, like in the shorter term?
The Peterson Park Extension, the bike path, along with the, that was another, the fishing kayak pier.
Yeah, so that, that part we haven't really talked about or allocated anything to what that park is going to be. And I think based on feedback that you received, you received, that would be a project that maybe it's, you know, one of the priority projects that would earmark for your parent harbor getting that project cleaned up.
Yes, on smaller budget wise, there's, there's a lot of little things that we can start with to keep going and then just plan for the future.
Anything else of the questions or any comments about the Parks Master Plan or directions? I know it's kind of a little overview, but I just wanted to be in the back of people's minds that if there are any other projects that are shorter term, it probably relates to parks that's, you know, not on the current list of days.
Centennial Park for safety reasons would be addressed. Safety of that, the wooden part.
Yeah, I wonder, do we have any?
The, I will say that Dennis' guys, there's two Parks guys that check the park regularly for safety because it is at that point, lifetime point. So it's constantly checked on for safety to be fixed and/or they'll close it for that purpose. But it's at the point where it's either you just take it down or, you know, close it and then wait for rebuild.
Okay. Any other questions, comments about parks or any right here that you want to discuss? Otherwise, I'll, I'm going to have Data Flores, Finance Director, and he run the presentation on the capital items. And this will be, I'm sure, we'll go through slides and some questions and answers and some thought contributions, individual items. So obviously trustees should have a copy, an hard copy in front of them of what they put together. It is on yours.
So thank you, May, and thank you, board and host, host and attendees. I want to start out with saying that I hope that this session is going to be an interactive session, is an opportunity for the board to provide us their preferences and some feedback on how we want to proceed with the, especially the existing capital plan or budgets, whatever we want to call the project. I also want to make a note that I want to thank the staff, James Kine gave me some numbers for the capital, existing capital plan. I also reached out to some of the staff to try to get to as much close to data that is available to make good decisions in this presentation. Okay, so in this plan, I want to first highlight that there are two capital plans and or project plans that I want to highlight. Number one, we usually go through for the budget process and capital planning. And what that entails on the left here are like things like major repairs, maintenance, vehicle, equipment, new purchases, computer software, hardware, and we also commit debt. And the reason we commit debt is because sometimes it's better that we get low rate interest tax attempt loans for the village versus paying a lump sum of money for some of the equipment like Public Works that need. And there's other things that we discussed during the process. The plan today is to discuss the existing capital project plan, which I call it the carryover budget plan or phases because they go in phases. And those include the new park, the Good Village Hall, the Public Works Building, Rim Road, Rim Road Utilities, et cetera. So our focus today is going to be an existing capital plant project, which are things that carried over from the last year's capital plan that's carrying over to this year's plan coming up and not the annual capital plan. That will be in the budget meeting in the near future. So I just want to touch bases a little bit of how we fund the annual capital plan during the budget process. That plan is subsidized by utility taxes. At the end of the year, I transfer utility taxes from the general fund to the capital fund, which is where we put the annual capital that we're going to put on throughout the year. The collection is $1,025,000. The obligated current in that fund is $333,000. And last year, we put the road program, we added another $400,000 from general fund money to complete the $1 million road program we have currently in this year. This does not mean that in the next year, we need to put the $400,000, but it's sitting there in this current budget year. Then the remaining, both the other items that will be presented to the board that we need for capital. It's very important to understand that the general fund is the other source of money that we would have to have more than $1,025,000 to do any of the annual capital. So we're going to discuss the existing major capital projects. I just wanted to give you a little highlight that we're talking about two different things here, but today we're just going to stick to the existing major capital project. So the goal is to discuss the available cash at the time, is to review the list of capital projects that we have and get feedback from the board on how you want to prioritize it based on the funding that's available. We have several buckets of funds in the Village of Antioch. Antioch has over 20 funds, funds in the village that we reconcile, we pull funds from and we operate. But these are the key ones. These are, these are funds where they earmark, they've been designated for a specific purpose. We also have the general fund, the water sewer fund, all of these that have fund balances that are available that we can use to pay for projects. You have grants, we receive grants and we got bond funds. In the general fund here, the general fund, as I said, the utility taxes in the general fund, we transfer all the general fund to the capital fund, the annual capital fund to pay for the expenses designated that year. And the general fund is also where you can take some of the fund balance and add to the capital fund in order to complete certain projects you want above the $1,025. The water sewer fund is what's called an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund is like a business fund and the revenues and expenses usually have to meet unless you're going to put a reserve. And the water sewer fund is a fund that needs to subsidize itself on revenues. It is a user fee fund where it pays for everything within that fund. So with the water sewer fund, we've got to keep in close eye and make sure that we, if we use any fund balance out of the water sewer fund, it has to be for the water sewer fund infrastructure. We've got the central business districts that were created, we've got the east business district that was created, and these obviously put with the intent to do certain redevelopment. Right now, the central business district and the east business district pays for the bond 22 that we issued last year. We have the offer fund, we receive government money in, in last year, and that money is specific to, to what we can spend. You've got the bond fund where all the bond money is sitting in the operation and the expenditures come in and out for the projects we complete. The rebuilt Illinois, it was a one-time, a three-year allotment that we got that has been completed, the money is available for to use. We do have the SNC grant, we received $605,000 so far for that grant. In the general fund bucket, we have available, apart from the 3.5 million, the Village of Antioch has 3.5 billion in reserve to operate. Should we have an emergency disaster, we have enough to pay what we're mandated to pay. On assignment right now, the general fund is 6.2 million. In this bucket I'm putting is 3 million, and I'll explain why. We have to keep some liquid cash to pay for comp payable. We have to be ready for any emergency purposes, purchases that we may need. The general fund is a fund where the bucket, the money goes in that bucket, but it usually is used to help other funds. We also have, like I discussed, unit capital projects, which above that utility tax, you need to consider sometimes if you're going to put on the general fund balance to pay for some of those capitals. We also have payroll, payroll is about half a million dollars a month. Sometimes you have prepaid, so we need the liquid cash. We also have to consider if there are any development incentive agreements out there that we're going to be up fronting money, that this is one of the buckets you want to hold that money from. We have the water sewer capital plan, I put in the bucket 2.5 million, we have 4.5 million. This fund is only, the funds are to be used only for the water sewer fund. Again, we have accounts payable, sometimes a larger accounts payable, we may have some emergency purchases, Dennis to vouch for that. Then we have to consider that the, the water sewer fund also is yearly, is yearly capital project that it needs, and we have cable as well. We have, those are the two major funds that we use for cable and operations. In the business district right now, we have 3.5 million dollars in the fund balance. I put in the bucket 3 million because right now your east and your central business district is being used, totally used to pay for the bond 22. So with 3 million and leaving $500,000 in there, you don't know if it's something you want to do in the district itself. It could be hard times hit, the sales tax goes down, and you have some kind of lovely pooling in all out, I wouldn't recommend, but that's poor decision. The same thing for the central business district, it has in its fund balance 1.1 million, I put in the bucket $600,000 for capital. There we go, I put some information with the SNC grant, a lot of yous are very familiar with that grant and what it means. We receive a check for $605,000. It is a reimbursement grant, so we up front the money, they reimburse us. To keep in mind that this is a reimbursement grant, we have deadlines, it has to meet the criteria, and there's a timeline to receive the money. The offer fund, I put information there, we have certain obligation things, we have certain timing to spend the money. This is a lot of the COVID to create, to help the, the industry, the infrastructures, even help with personnel, water sewer, those items are all listed above. We have 1.9 million to add into the bucket, and that could be totally used, it must be expended, as you can see, by '26. The rebuilt Illinois, it was six installments over the course of three years, is kind of heated exactly by the motor fuel tax, the standards and policies, the procedures are the same. We have $600,000 available that we could use for the projects that I'll be presenting shortly. A, a big fund is the one with the bond, this is the bond money that we have available as of today. And up there, I put what was put in the bond transcript regarding how the money is supposed to be used. This is the capital, this is the major capital project expenses. Last year, Jim Kine, he created this sheet and put some numbers. I worked, I got some data from him and some of the staff. I looked at the contract invoice, the dollar amount it had on the last AP, and that is what you see up there. I know we still have to pay the other half of the dishevel, we have those other items there. I have a question mark on the soil because I am not sure, since I was not part of any of, any of these projects, I would need like help from staff, engineers, architects, to get a better number than this in order for me to plug it to be actual. I'm not sure if there's anything coming from the soil. I'm not sure if there's other items that are not listed there. I got the information from Jim Kine on some of this stuff, but I pulled the number from the contract invoice that says two of a month two. So I just wanted to present this and make sure that there's an understanding that there probably is numbers that are missing there, but only the parties involved can give me that data. This is the best I did to put the data together. So that project is coming as you can see, $12,988,912.
Data, this 18 million, this is for the attorney? This is all done by ordinance? We put this together by ordinance?
Definitely.
Right? Right? Can we get a copy? Can I get a copy of that ordinance? Circle it with a whole lot.
Yeah.
We need that, we need that ordinance.
Excellent.
Just for information purposes, then, then we're on the call stream, right? So Strand has been our construction management company in this process. We went over numbers, potential tractions, or items that may come off the project, or else that I called to also speak up. And despite anything that, you know, given these numbers, I think our change orders were at 1%.
Yeah, 1.6 or 1.8.
Yeah, so it was, you know, we're at 1.6% of the project to change orders. In addition, that speaks to the fact that the change orders on this job are basically related to everything that's underground. And now that we are to that point of being, you know, getting subgrated, there shouldn't be these type of items that pop up. Basically, Josh Buller, when I asked him how it was going, he was basically ridiculous of a whole garbage dump. So what was under there is things to, you know, not, not always done, and I'm going to add anything to that that he didn't actually, whoever I was going to call on the extras. So I think some of these numbers and change orders encompass a lot of what the soil, extra soil stuff was, right, Dennis?
Um, yeah, some of it. There are some areas that, you know, were recently done, we encountered some heat in digging the stream bank. So those numbers are being calculated right now. Those areas needed structural fill because it's holding the landscape block, or there was a piece of the bridge at that location. So those areas needed to come out, we didn't know that they were there, and so basically that new stream bank was excavated. Those are being quantified.
I have some other contractors in the room, but I mean, and my experience with this stuff from a business, you know, generally looking at 5% to 10% change orders over the life of the job to the, to the bottom line, 5% is pretty good, but Zach from Strand is saying, I'm going to get this to as close to zero as I possibly can. So that, those discussions are, but yeah, the trustee Kurt's had a question or comment?
I got two comments. One, she has, like she mentioned the question mark on the soil. There's been a lot of discussion on the soils lately. I think it's been incumbent upon us to have Deacon and Buller both give that to the board, what exactly they did, what the cost were. The Deacon is our, our environmental consultant of the property, and Buller is the one who's running all this stuff.
We could have the 29th, please. Just to give an update on that, change orders and so on conditions.
And the cost of the change order, what it actually costs was, I've heard fans around and from people, we spent millions and millions of dollars away, and I want to know exactly what it is. The other, the other issue I have, just to point out, that's a good point, Data very nicely gave us a presentation of what money we have in our pockets, the garbage fails it looks like. And the best I can come up with, it's around $30 million. 30, 30.5 million dollars, his bottom line, she's showing us here, 41.9 million. So I think we've got a lot of discussion.
Sure. And please feel free to, to drop me an X, any question, okay? So the next one is the Public Works Building facility, that number has not changed, it's still, it was given to me at 15 million. The Village Hall, Jim Kine indicated that the 2 million is just to remodel and do the fixing, so that decreased from what you saw last year. The road program, again, it's motor field, motor field tax is for road program. We can't sit here and discuss that we're going to do anything. So you know that for $600,000, you can start doing pre bidding for that and just going to pre-foof-foof to the board and saying, we have this. But if you wanted to inform any of the $400,000 additional, then you go to general fund. I did want to point out, I'm sorry, at the right-hand side, I was very specific on what buckets you could use 24, so please pay attention to that because you've got to make sure that we, we strategize correctly. The road program, 1 million, I already explained that. We have the Rim Road, I spoke to Dennis, and we put that number in, but it was subject to change. We have Rim Road Utilities, the same number was provided last year. And then we have road number five, and I think that maybe, there's a possibility, I thought that won't, won't happen, or need to happen, my goodness, that, right? And even so, the funds is coming from the water sewer regardless, and that is covered for this year.
And just to fill in a couple of items, I did a, in anticipation to speak to Realtor Brian Shaw, see if he could give me a general idea, a CMA of what our current property might be worth at, we heard Village Hall, and he came back with a number between 1.1 and 1.5 million dollars. So whatever he did receive for that building could be dollar for dollar for the other property.
We just have to deal with seller though.
You need to deal with seller, yeah.
Yeah. Can't count it.
Correct, correct.
So I wanted to also include other projects, which we have these projects here, it looks like Steph told me that since 2018, we've been waiting for those two grants, but I did wanted to show that, you know, the projects are in the queue, waiting for grants to happen. And at the bottom, Jim Kine gave me these projects that have, we've also been in the queue since last year when we listed them, we don't have any funding for it at this time. We just want, I just wanted to make sure I keep it on the spreadsheet as a reminder that these were presented before and the things to think about in the future. Any questions on this? Over here, so this is the part that trustee Pierce is doing about. So I wanted to present to you the, the funding, I hear a total from the funding available would be the cash that's sitting in the bank that we currently have, it could be fund balance, or we could, just like you said, it was 31, it's 31 million. I put the total expenditures for the projects that were listed on the spreadsheet, leaving us in the negative of 10 million. But I want to clarify that this is as if we were breaking ground today. This is if everything was going to happen today. It doesn't mean that as the years have gone by, because all these things are not going to be done in the next fiscal year, that we can't like look at the fund balances and see if additional funding has come in to subsidize this year. But at this time, if everything were to happen today, we will be short. I just want to point that out.
Let me make sense, everybody? The shells are going underground on all these today based on what we have in the bank. So obviously there's a time element.
So there's a timing difference, so it's a constant point, timing difference here. I just want to keep this in mind. I also want to touch on the SNC grant. Jim Kine gave me the number, we're still waiting on that, on the grants. And again, I just want to emphasize that there's no guarantee that that money is going to come to us. There's certain criteria that needs to be met, certain submission, there's an, there's a, a concern now with extension, and if we met the extension, where we're going to be able to complete the task. So I just want to highlight that, the possibility, but it says I've heard in one of the, at this time, disposed money, that's what I look, and I.
605,000?
I like that.
You're talking 605.
No, the.
We know some of this too, I know some of 28. So we have received the first payment on it, 605, and we make applications as the project goes on. There's been a request in for a six-month extension, which has happened in a lot of these projects, you know, with SFC, the lead, the lady, new materials, and so on and so forth. So I haven't had any thought or concern that that wasn't coming in. I do know that they put in an extension request to somebody, there's a new employee there that they're waiting to hear back on, but, you know, let's be hopeful. But if he does, we want to know right away.
No, you're, you're correct.
And then the 3.5 million, I, I called the engineer today because this has been, this was before I came to the Village of Antioch. We haven't applied for that, where there's some grants that they're looking into in the future, but this is not a grant that we have applied for.
Where is that grant, 3.5 million? Is that SNC too, or?
No.
That's, so that's a different grant?
That's.
This is Ramon.
Yes, it was pertaining to the grant.
This is Council of Mayors.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's like 80, 20 grants, we have applied or the process of it, HTR Green. Well, I think one of the things we're, let me back up. We need to make sure we have all of our. We need to make sure we have all of our easements and acquisitions of properties in place before we. Um, we've been working closely with Body Craft, who I met with yesterday, to finalize that deal. Uh, Qunis for their easements. And then there's one little piece of property by, um, Tractor Supply, we require, once we have it under control, um, HR Green is working towards its grants. Again, um, it's an eighty, twenty, um, eighty percent of Council of Mayors, right? We haven't received anything from them for a long time, so we're going through that process now.
So our share, then we'd have to match about eight hundred thousand.
Yep.
Any questions on this question?
Not, not this one. The, the page before, you just have to, at the bottom of your list, it shows the Woods of Antioch, two, two and a half million dollars.
Yeah. Gentry State.
Gentry State, so it's, as we, because we've got a lot of discussion about it with the game. If we're to do just that specifically, it takes two and a half years of our road program to fix that.
Yeah, roughly, we, we're doing a million dollars a year.
Yeah.
We could use MFT money too, which that's part of our road program, roughly six hundred thousand. Uh, but that would jeopardize the remaining roads, uh, for those two years or three years.
Can you give us a forecast of what remaining roads are over the two or three years so we can have a comparison of the roads?
You've got a pretty fresh, with all the different.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
I just want to.
I can follow up with that information.
So we can compare, I'm sure.
Okay. Is that okay? Yeah, just on the, we have the Woods of Antioch, we're not asking it to be done in two years. We would like just a, you know, five year plan, we would love something to, you know, on the backs of stuff with the rest of the two persons.
Okay, yeah, because I know it's not a million dollar number, it could be.
And I do believe that that number is fully ripping out all of the concrete, uh, reestablishing the base drainage and putting in, uh, asphalt. So there was another option, I believe, that was discussed about doing, uh, concrete rehabbing and so forth. That HR Green had, had drafted up, but that is, that number was an estimate of fully removal of concrete and putting in asphalt.
Right.
So the next slide is again, it's just to highlight that, um, plus you use any fund balance. I know the camera on this side is blocking, but I need, um, the fund, we, we, anytime we're going to use fund balance, we need to go from the board. And also, I know that the mayors discuss some things, but I have put on there that there's a possibility of many unknowns for the purchase for the park. So I just wanted to put that on there and make note that, um, it could be less, it could be more. And I did the best that I could to provide for a number today. Um, so over here, what I did, I, uh, put next to, I put the funding, I put the projects. And on the left side, a mental picture for you to, um, provide, you know, as we start, um, committing to these projects in one order, now that you see the funding, you, you know, the need, prices have changed, that there needs to be a discussion on which route and how we're going to cope so that we can, and we plan. Uh, and on the right side of, like, you want to prioritize, tell us, like, which, what project is going to go in what order? On the side to help you and everybody got a copy of a PowerPoint. I wanted to put like a cheat area there to show you what you can use for what project and help you out. And on the right again, it shows you the total for the funding. The middle is the source. It means these are the sources that you can use for these specific projects. So I put it down for you so that it's easier than to read the new spreadsheet. You can tell staff, the board can tell staff which part we're going, and then to understand the pieces of funds that we will move to give a project. Any questions?
So these numbers are all based upon the fact, I'm sorry if I'm not right. But these are all based upon the fact that we all agree that fifteen million for Public Works, fifteen million for the downtown, uh, Village Hall, or whatever. That's, that's based upon, for the assumption that.
Yes, that's correct.
Green.
But if we left, you know, we can say, we're not going to go this route, so it's just.
And why do we say we're not going to go this route?
The board does.
Yeah, we, we, we just discussed it today.
Okay. Um, I will say before we start on this too, I want to clarify, the data brought up, so I'm getting a little more about this. I know that when well five, because that's a problem, which was took over by Harris Pet. Uh, yeah, there's been indications of HR Green, uh, studies that, you have, the private well water, when you need that well, so instead of spending a million and a half or four million dollars for certain systems, we probably need to decommission that well, but I'll let that.
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the evaluations of the water system that we're looking into. Um, is if we, we really do need that well or not. Um, but we did also look into the filtration of it. The filtration is four point five million dollars estimated. So, um, that again, took us on a detour to say, well, is it worth it to put filtration there if we need it? Or possibly look for a new well location? So that's another avenue that we're looking at right now, is our water, uh, updating our water model to understand, uh, you know, Oakwood Knowles area, uh, that has low water pressure. If we're going to do a new well, you know, do some of the monitoring and the pressurization tests up in that area. So, uh, the well buy is still ongoing, uh, that number's been in there, but, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at doing filtration there at four and a half million and, um, seeing if we can utilize what we have right now or look at a new well.
And if we have a spot on another item, um, I heard some, well, I went to Jim yesterday and had like the, the help balances that they went through that he gave all this stuff, um, certain items, but he said something in our meeting about Grim Road Utility. That number was necessary, was not, you said anything about that?
Um, well, I don't, I don't know if you mean roughly pertaining to the public works facility.
Well, no, about four point five million, that was for Grim Road Utility. Is that all needs to be done, or is there a way?
Um.
Do some of that?
Well, we, we've had discussions if the PW facility basically proceeded and Grim Road didn't necessarily, because we are looking at all our funding avenues, is running water and sewer. We have a lift station proposed for basically mid-block of the new Grim Road. Uh, and then we would eliminate the Raymond Lift Station and the Lift Station just, uh, kind of north and east of Body Craft. Uh, so we would run basically the water and sewer up the mid-block. That would roughly be where the PW facility was. Um, and then that would serve us, and we wouldn't have to do the remaining underneath CN railroad tracks and so forth until maybe there was opportunity of development by selling a piece of a property, um, or other grant funding coming in. So it was kind of a juggling act to see how we would proceed if the PW facility was allowed to, how we would serve that, and then how we would spend some of the money and gets part of the utilities in, uh, the Grim Road, whether it would be just a driveway entrance, or whether we would make that an access or not. That would be delayed, um, you know, full access if it was only for a PW facility. So there's a couple of moving factors of how much you really could invest there or how much you really need, don't need to. So depending on what's decided.
So they, they say, yes, the report, probably. By that four point five million, you say, you leave me a million and a half of that to get it done, or is it that fifty fifty?
I would, yeah, I would have to look at the lineal footage and break it out, that, you know, related to the engineers' opinion of problem cost, and I could get it somewhat close.
So you mentioned Public Works. I forget, what was the square footage of the Public Works proposal?
Um, I think it's forty thousand complete.
Forty thousand complete?
Yeah, that's, uh, admin and, uh, storage.
Uh, the reason I'm asking is, and this is for consideration for, uh, the other night, I, Wednesday night, I was actually, like, I was talking to the mayor or talking to somebody, no, I was talking to Brent. And I'm driving up fifty seven, I go by Mantino in Illinois. And I look over there and I see this big green leafy thing, I'm like, huh, where's the pot store? I'm like, wow, you can see that from the highway. And then I look closer, it says Mantino Public Works and doing that, and so it's like, it's like just the end of it, so. Uh, but I'm looking at it, and I'm like, well, that's kind of new looking. So I went online and looked, and Mantino just built a facility, uh, forty five thousand square feet for a, uh, a town that's, uh, about three quarters of the size of Antioch in square foot and square mileage and, um, and, uh, and, um, in population. So it's, it's a little smaller town, but they, they built this really from what it looks like in the road. I don't know, I don't know all the specifics yet, a facility, if you look on, online, for seven million dollars. And so I'm thinking, Public Works, you know, we need to kind of look at other options and see what other people are doing compared to. Because it sounds like they built more for a hot west than what we got, and I don't know what we built though.
Yeah, I would have to see, I mean, one of, one of the, uh, thoughts in the beginning was to bring the architect in. Um, they follow a certain procedure with, uh, taking all of our fleet, all of our staff, and taking into consideration the population, the amount of miles. It's all done in the space needs analysis, and that's what they do for every, um, whether it's a school, village hall, fire station, public works building, that's how they come up with square footage. And we've actually knocked it down. Um, they had us, uh, I think around sixty thousand square feet. We brought it way down as, as much as we could, according to, to statistics that they run and the software they use.
Because, I mean, I'll just be honest with you, the board, I don't see how we can fund a fifteen month dollar Public Works. And I think we're going to have to look at other options and third floor. Well, not necessarily third floor, but, you know, take a look and, uh, I'm, I'm glad to get down to Mantino and see what exactly it is for seven million dollars in this comparison, because I, I don't know exactly what they did. But to me, there's such a big swing between the two that it makes me question, what have you got going on here? I can't, I can't see us moving forward on Public Works at fifteen million at this point. So that kind of excuses all the discussion.
I think one of the, um, two things to that point, uh, I agree with you. A, um, I think that's, it's obviously a very high priority for all of us to get public works facilities done. And make sure that it's done correctly or not come out slowly, you know, quickly. You know, also considering, um, all these projects, phase approaches, I understand things aren't going to get cheaper over time, but, you know, things can phase along if they're planned that way. Um, or alternatively, coming up with a number that the board, that the village is comfortable with, and proposing our number and say, okay, well, we have eight billion or ten billion, what can we get for that? So, you know, I don't go shopping for a house and say, just build the house you want. I only have three hundred thousand dollars. So I think we can, and again, within reason, I don't, you know, we may get to play it back that Public Works doesn't work. But I think that's kind of the conversation that we should have here today. When we look at the numbers, the priorities, like, let's gear guard this much for this and let's see where it goes.
And that's, that may be what we need to look at phase approaches on everything. As to Zeta's point earlier, just the shortfall today, if, if anything happened today.
Sure.
But, um, I mean, this is kind of a, sounds like a dump truck to fill. And, and Village Hall, it may be that we have to move just staff over there and, and so Village Hall needs to, you know, do enough work over to get staff comfortable, and then so Village Hall will do the rest of the work. You know, Public Works, they have to move the, the employees out of what I consider and everybody else probably considers unsafe and unhealthy work environment and use that area down there for storage and phase in the, the, the Public Works all the time. I mean, it's nice to say, let's just build this stuff, let's get stuff done and, and show that we're making progress, but at the same time, we can't.
Sure.
Crash the bank and, and, and rob the treasury to.
And, and I think that, I think that we, uh, as a board, should start kind of working back. Obviously, the downtown redevelopment project, say, was twelve point five. You had another, say that's five percent, so it's one hundred and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you had, then that's thirteen point two or something. Then, um, Village Hall building, um, there's been indications that that can be done for two million dollars or less. And I think that is, you know, something that we can accomplish with the money that we have. And then phase in a meeting hall later, uh, this thing opens up. So this might be our, maybe a potential meeting hall space for the interim. Um, this room, it actually holds three hundred people, they get a partnership up or whatever, so. Or, or the senior center, until we figure out if we can build a brand new meeting hall. But just put that in our longer term capital plan. And then obviously the Public Works come up with a number that we want to say, hey, let's go back with this number and see what we can modify and fit to. I mean, if we get to know them today, I would say it's very successful, but we, we, unknowns, uh, Village Hall.
Thank you.
So, uh, so we'll take a five minute break, and then let's go, come back and, and actually work through this worksheet a little bit and talk about, is it dollars that should run? All right. Thank you. Five minute break, so we'll start again. So.
We're unmuted.
We're, we're unmuted, all right. So let's start again, and then, um, I really think, maybe I'm speaking out of place of this, but I really think the consensus and the focus should be Public Works and Village Hall, and then, you know, Grim Road as we get to that. At least the utility portion to be able to get through with Public Works. So I think, if anybody else opposed to that type of discussion, or think that you're missing something in that regard, we didn't want to add to it, I mean, start, then we'll look at the other items. But like I said, um, and then see what that is. So, um, let's start with Village Hall first, that's easier. My intention with that building was always from day one, to get that building, use the four walls that are there, remodel the inside or make the inside, uh, to a place where all of the village staff can get their.
B or O? The new one or old?
The new one.
And the old one had to be black and sold.
Yeah, or it's sold, it's sold to a developer, or, you know, somebody.
That's a special expectation.
Yeah, that one, hopefully that sold to the developer, that's where they, I got the number for one, one and a half million. So whatever money comes in from that sale. I was also talking to Michael too, I mean, we have that property and another, a couple of other properties we own that, we have all like Grim Road property, which, you know, could be sold eventually, um, in discussions with different companies. You know, it's also nice incentive to say, hey, we'll give you a, this parcel of this company built here, so that may not be dollars coming in. And I've heard that the, uh, township is working towards, personally, the Lutheran School at eight three for the township building, um, and senior services, so I think our agreement with the township is, if they've abandoned a property on a bit there, that we have that property, that we can also sell and put some money into parks or whatever. So those are assets that we have that we can study some more. But back to the Village Hall, you know, just the daily working environment, just the way the building is laid out, if not conducive to collaboration. And some people that, some parts of the building might like that. They're like literally hidden in the closet, get, find it on a map. So we need to get in a more professional situation where, uh, everybody's in the same group to collaborate. And I've been told, I'm quoting this, but we have to be actual numbers, I think. But whoever's doing the design thought the initial, just getting the building was like a million and a half, two million dollars. Is that accurate?
I understand that.
Obviously, there's moving expense and other things that come into play. But I think that's something that we seriously need to, uh, start even thinking about a timeline. I'm like, hey, let's try and be in there by end of twenty four or something. Because we had control of that building, I believe, early January, you know, the audit. So we can start actually taking the plans that they prepared. We pretty much have a, a, a solid, completed plan for that building. And I think it was presented briefly that night, but I think I, I was focused on Public Works. We pretty much have a a a solid, completed plan for that building and I think it was presented briefly that night, but I think I I was focused on public works and so was everybody else. But I did need to get that plan to the trustees and hopefully form a resolution to forward that, get a real number. Also, as we move forward on these projects. Philosophically, uh I would support, right, hopefully, board support hiring a construction manager on the projects to, you know, start them from now in the planning and design phase. That they're involved in this from the beginning. Uh and I think the construction managers are typically paid on a percentage basis. Denny, I mean, Denny's our lead, our lead uh instruction expert here.
Yeah, yeah, what I've seen.
You can see what on a percentage app. It it can be negotiated, yes. So and then obviously have Denny um from a village perspective with, you know, the leadership uh monitor the progress on it. But uh right now, we have Strand on the park. And had a very good conversation with him the other day, comfortable, so I think it'll be nice to get that more involved in these meetings. Even as soon as twenty-nine, if there's updates, they can have to.
Strand, the construction manager, like you're talking to other projects.
So Strand is the engineer that basically designed all of um the park. With Lakota Group who did uh the landscape aspect of it and Williams that did the building. Um the nice, the nice thing, having Strand doing some of the. The project management is they design the plans, they know the specs, all the details by heart. So when the contractor is is trying to get by with something or maybe one of their subs is. They immediately know where to go, what to state. Um they know if there's change orders, they know, they basically oversee all the budgeting. And they keep it as an active list of all the changes, um all the tickets that come through. Um so it's it. I think it's worked out really nice for us so well because right now, um because they have been so involved from the beginning in the design of it. They know it almost better than anybody.
Have they been doing this all along with Jim or is this a new new step in? They stepped in to continue?
No, it was it was in the original. It was it was it, well, so I mean, basically between Jim and I, we represent the owner. Strand is representing the village um and overseeing basically the construction as it goes on. When the building starts to go up. Williams is going to be involved with that along with Strand. The bridge construction, that's strand, that's structural aspect. So they're overseeing that. Uh Lakota is heavily involved with uh all the landscaping. They'll be uh involved with the playground, I believe, the splash pad. Um that should be from that aspect, but um Strand was originally in their contract. That was part of their contract is to basically construction manage. You know, to a certain extent, some of the items, like I said, that Lakota is involved with and Williams, they're not necessarily, we're not having two individuals oversee the building. So Williams will take over that once that starts, you know, being erected.
So then with the plan, you mentioned for like the public works that did village hall, would it be to have the same type arrangement? Or would it be to have a separate construction manager plus the like engineering third and overseeing what the village plus?
Yeah, and we and we could go that route. Um you know, it it's been talked about, I don't, you know, how it'll change in the future. If you guys prefer a construction manager. Uh it is a third party, so you have the contractor or subcontractor wanting to deal with the owner and then you have the CM that represents the owner, but do they have the final choice? So then they're going back to the owner. So it's kind of, you could have only almost too many parties involved just to get the decision made. That's why with uh. With the downtown open space, um it's basically three party at once, uh whether it's the contractor, the engineer and the owner. It's a real quick decision usually that's that's the conclusion of whatever issues.
Because right now, my concern is first and foremost, making sure the the downtown redevelopment proceeds forward without turning into a big collision, mess and. All sorts of problems because we've lost one of our cogs in the wheels. Uh and then, you know, how are we gonna do the other stuff? My main first focus is downtown. We've got to get that done and have to make sure it's on track, but.
And I and I'm comfortable with, and that's what I think will be important for you guys to have. Everybody has Strand, come talk in a meeting and show how they track the progress and. Um in sitting in these meetings, um these meetings can't get content heated between Strand and the builder. There's, you know, there definitely are is pushback between the two where, you know. Really watching the means and methods. For instance, um there's recently a. Some uh part of the project where there's some gravel laid down and it was gone that they're going back to port like, was that gravel part of the project or was that just a, you know, means or methods to make something easier? So Strand would be like, hey, they're watching these methods out on everything. So like we do have good representation in that regard and Dennis as well. Jim and Amy have the footers. But yeah, that one that seems to be good and I think everyone will feel more comfortable when um you complete that or Mike or somebody. Do a quick overview of this whole thing, yeah. Alright, so where do we go from here with the with the um so so far we have, what, Williams has done the. Williams did the architectural renderings for the public works, I mean, the village hall?
Yes, both.
Both, okay. And we have we engaged anybody else other than them so far engineering wise or?
Um so so the engineer when uh Williams was uh brought on to basically collect information and design a concept and cost. Uh FQC is the engineer, they're the one, FQC, they're a company that's working with Williams. Um Williams brought them with them. And Gualt Hamilton is the engineer uh who uh Williams brought with them. So the design, there's. There's some design work, grading work, so forth. Gualt um will design that for us with Williams. There's some subs, I guess you could call them, that came with Williams.
So we got some actual numbers on that, right? For the getting into the building?
Yes, yeah, there is an actual uh uh cost estimate that is, I mean, they look at real time data. Um and and they promise that it is accurate.
Is there a, is there a raise a hand? I really do this like crazy. Um can you like raise your hand if you're comfortable with us pursuing getting into village hall at a two million dollar maximum cap? And just getting that project going. We move forward with that in that regard with Williams. Anybody not comfortable with that?
Just what was he asked on the whole? Kid you could rule like seven.
Uh Christine Boothard is also raping.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so moving forward with um, you know, we will put that on our on our list for uh two million dollars.
Okay, okay.
And let's say for, let's just say for, let's say for, you know, for something in giggles, let's put, let's put thirteen five on the mark as the. When we get to the the squeeze up, so what does that leave us um after we take those two numbers off? And that's assuming and Zayda, these numbers on the right, if I heard you correctly, is not exhausting these funds. These are keeping some money in the fund. These are keeping money in the fund.
And the reserve.
And the reserve, okay, alright. Um alright, so public works, this is gonna be a lot. So um Denny, I keep putting you on the spot. Um this is your project, it's gonna be owe it to. Public Works people ways to get this done uh for them and so talk about the, you know, you've seen other facilities, you've seen other numbers. But I'd like to get out of here today. We have, this is what we're budgeting for this project and we're comfortable moving forward with it at this number. So it's a real big subject. Our floor.
Yeah, so so it just recently I discussed, you know, kind of the process that Williams went through. Um looking at the amount of staff we have, even what we should have or may have um in a town of our size. Um looking in our fleet, in the size of our fleet, um and basically putting that into a piece of software, creating the square footage that. We should have with a small amount of extra square footage, um not much. Uh basically for expansion. We do have some areas that, well, yeah, out at Cobble, we're gonna have new roads that going. We may need another dump truck. Um you know, there's there's uh acreage out to the east that may be expanded. So we didn't want to just lock ourselves into. What we need are just a tad bit smaller because then we'll be banging on the door saying we're too small again. Um and and they encourage that because they deal with many municipalities, counties, uh cities, private entities and. Um you know, it's it's something that they experienced over the years that they've been a business and. The, we did go on um a tour of some facilities and it ranged from uh brand new. For I think it was Montgomery, they have a brand new facility to a remodel in addition. Um and then to an older facility that. I don't know, I'm not sure what it's called, but it was like hunting forest, it was way larger, but it was a nice experience. I guess the representation there was, it was a uh. Two stories, which that's what we're looking at doing to save on cost of the lay of the land that we're looking at out of uh. Off of the proposed Grim Road has a large uh grade change, basically as a large knob in the. The a portion of land where we were going to basically put the offices would step down and the garage would be at a lower level. So that would allow us to stack. The offices over the storage building and save on square footage again. Um so uh, yeah, we we did uh visit some. Um you know, their cost was right there. I think Montgomery was a little bit bigger than us and they built. Um they estimated, I think their population was gonna go from like. Twenty-five thousand or twenty thousand to fifty thousand. They had a a huge growth that they were expecting. So they were a little bit bigger. Um and we took that into consideration, but it was nice to see a new facility and and how they came up with. Basically the square footage in the same process that they are for us and then how they implemented it and and built it and Montgomery uh seemed to be pretty happy with it. So. Yeah. Any questions or?
Sure.
What's the square for for cost? Um so FQC had, I think it was three seventy-five, it was four fifty for the offices and two fifty, I think. Uh for village hall.
No, I'm talking about public works, yeah.
Yeah, I believe um public works was at like three seventy-five per square foot.
Is that about right? Like you, I guess I'm gonna ask you, like, that's right, you're gonna have to.
No, I I am definitely relying on their their sub consultant FQC. That's what that's what they do for a living, they estimate. Um. I'm kind of happy with that number because originally they were talking four fifty.
Oh, really?
So I was so, I was I was kind of happy that there were three fifty, three seventy-five. Um of course, you go back two years and it was down to two seventy-five, three hundred. So. Um, yeah.
So the piece of property that you're talking about, this multi-level, is that the same piece they're storing all of that, that big pile of topsoil on or?
Um no, so the piece of property that we've. We've proposed, it's it's not set in stone. Um the parcel has not been subdivided. It's it's a preliminary uh placement of it would be to the south of Body Craft and tucked in kind of that eastern southeastern corner where Grim and the Creek are.
Seven and a creek?
It's not gonna be right up against the creek, but the creek behind us would be the creek to me. We would have a detention facility. Um I mean, you're you're probably looking at a piece of property that we would need is probably five to seven acres.
That's not one of the big goals, is it, all the way away from the creek?
Again, it wouldn't, I mean, there would be substantial property between us and them. We wouldn't be right on the creek.
I I'll be, if we're looking for secrets, I'm looking at eight million dollars and I'm looking at steel buildings, I'm looking at uh pretty bad buildings, I'm looking at. Any kind of building that's functional to fit their needs. I don't, I I think, honestly, I think the glass.
I'm not in favor of glass.
Pals with mezzanine and all that stuff was just a little bit too too uh rich for my blood. I I think the taxpayer runs out of town on the rail.
And and I had discussions with the architect uh after, you know, some of the the uh drawings that they drew up with the glass and that's not. By any means a place that uh we were looking for. Um you know, we're we're looking for simple. I I wanted to serve a purpose. I wanted it to weather the storms. I want it to be, you know, built efficiently for heating and cooling. Um I I want it to last a long time. I don't want to be maintaining the building or or having the board uh. Pass costs that we have to maintain it in twenty-five years because it's losing its paint or uh falling apart. So I was looking to get the most efficient, properly. Commercialized building as I put, not looking for anything fancy, uh the the glass walls and so forth. Uh we'll definitely be taking that.
Like I said, I'm I'm looking at eight million and the thing is functional. But I know we have before because it's reprehensible where you get there.
And the and the mezzanine, uh just so you're aware, uh it's it's a, actually the mezzanine, the square footage cost, I think is like. We'll we'll meet, but I think it's down around a buck fifty to two hundred square foot and the the advantage to that is inside storage. Um otherwise, it's all lost space. Uh and also with the mezzanine design on ours, we were creating parting underneath it. To again, make the best use of the square footage that we could with not having a bunch of coal space. So um it's 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 a really actually a cheap. Um add when all considered and we were trying to double the purpose of.
Anyone else?
I I mean.
I mean, I'm pretty.
Yeah, yeah, um like I I kind of gave her general members, you know, just kind of tried to get the math right and I put a million for road program.
Well, and and we can't, you know, it it's up for discussion. We can take it down to six hundred. We've we've made great strides in uh maintaining our roads and. You go back five years ago or ten years ago and and you look at the graph that we put up or the pie chart and you can see. Where some of our roads were down around zero or one in a worse condition. We don't have those anymore. So we've made great progress in getting those roads. You know, more up to speed, more on initially what Jim and I said is three miles a year and we've been hitting over that. So. Um you know, all depending on how the bids come in, but we, I think this year we did three point two. Three point one five. So what I'm saying is MFT is locked to basically roads. That's all we can spend at six hundred thousand dollars. We could look at bringing it down to six hundred thousand dollars and putting that four hundred thousand dollars for a few years somewhere else.
And that four hundred thousand, what I was gonna suggest is we keep our road program locked at one million, but do six six hundred thousand on the regular. Roads because as you said, they're getting free to pay and then come up with a plan that over so many years since the four hundred thousand on the woods getting that fully swapped out. Because it's not fair to one part of the woods to get get uh asphalt roads and everything rebuilt properly. And then the other part, we say, oh, we got this remanufactured facility type thing. We can do to fix it.
No, that that is an option.
And and then I put uh two billion record now for Grim Road and Grim Road Utilities each. So obviously I get something from the public works. Village Hall two and then I put public. Village Hall two and then I put Public Works at, uh, she says the number at ten right now, like the twenty-nine. Which, you know, obviously this would be a little less, uh, about two million dollars. That's true for governments, uh, two million dollars to play with, but yeah, two million dollars to, uh, you know, for old bridges or big changes or things. That's easy, so, so, I'm proposing, and I don't even think anybody might care, well, I've never had it. I'm hoping we go to the architects and say, what, what if we're ten million, what do they say?
That would be my next step, is if you said ten million, eight million, twelve million, whatever. Um, is to basically go back to them and say, well, I have information and here's, here's the budget that they're gonna allow me to work in. What, what can I not build, what size building does this give me? Um, you, you know, there, there's a fuel station in the original, uh, estimate. I immediately pulled that out, that was a savings of a half million dollars, so. I will, I will definitely go back to them, uh, I have put them on pause because I don't want them designing other designs. That, that don't mean anything or, you know, changing square footage, they changed some square footage. And I said, just leave it alone until I get a, a firm direction on which way we're going, um, so they're not wasting our time or money. So, yeah, I think that's.
I, I'm just gonna say real quick, so if that's the road, you're, you're taking ten million, I'm saying eight million, and I'm pretty sure, um. Why not take the road that's going to the back of the thing, okay, we, we, we've got a possibility of ten, but we got some road resistance today. Give us, give us what you get to be in one of them.
It has the, uh, you know, in the negotiations, like, you know, what I said, you go with eight, but we're starting to kinda give you authority to go up to this number, you know?
Yeah, and I, I guess, you know, eight's a nice number and I appreciate that, Trusty Pierce, but when they gave me an estimate of fifteen million. You're saying build me something that's half and I, I have brought, I have a fear that I'm gonna come back and then instead. Or I'm gonna report to you that basically would just scratch property. I mean, that's, when you look at, they're gonna basically say, you're gonna get a twenty thousand square foot building and.
Oh, that, that doesn't maintain over seven, you get a forty thousand square foot.
I would, I'd have to look into that, that was just new information, you know, I will, I will.
It is a steel building, but at the same time, it, it, it's functional and fits their purpose and, and, and I think that's what we're looking for.
But, and we've had the discussions of materials, whether it's, uh, whether it's, uh, pre-bath concrete or steel. Um, and that depends on the, the year or the time of the year, sometimes they're seeing steel prices higher than concrete. And they told us straight out, they'll look at both options, but you may say go with the steel and it may be more expensive than pre-cash concrete. So. I will look into the, the Public Works, they.
And we trust you, we are.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, am I on there? I'm having a hard time hearing some of the discussion, but, and I apologize for my voice, I'm a little hoarse. Um, I just wanted to point out, when it comes to this dollar amount. Even the eight million, we don't have, so at the end of the day, we could keep talking about building this Taj Mahal of public works facilities. We don't have the, the, the resources to do it, so. I, I, I think I heard it was either the mayor or, or trustee Pierce said, we have to think outside the box and look at different alternatives. I really think we need to do that. I think we need to, we need to look at different options that are, 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 that we could do immediately to relieve some of the stress. That they have for their building size and their offices and so forth, but we need to do something that we can afford immediately. Not come up with an eight to ten or twelve million dollar building that's gonna take us another five to ten years to come up with the financing for.
Right now, we, that, those numbers, uh, based on, so if we pay for, you know, village, state of target is thirteen-five and. Uh, village hall is two, that leaves us sixteen million available, not completing the cash account. Uh, data held the amount of money in the cash accounts, we have the reserve accounts. So after the park and the village hall, that leaves about sixteen million and something, sixteen and some change, billion and some change. So there is the money for that, but they're trying to see how we wanna spread that out.
No, no, I understand, I, I mean, that, that presentation was great with all the buckets and showing what we have. I'm just saying is I wanna get them some relief as soon as possible. And if we're gonna keep going back and forth on these, this high-end building, I just don't think it's gonna get built at all. So I, I'd rather see us look at both options, if we could afford it and we have the money, then great, let's do it. But I mean, obviously something a little less extravagant than what we had designed. But a, at the same time, I wanna get them some relief from what they're in now. And if that means doing something a little smaller or doing something else, then I think we need to do it.
Can we all agree that this is in the top three of priorities, is this all of, this is top three, everybody agree?
Yes.
Between ahead, question.
So as far as, so we have the police station, oh, sorry.
No, no, that's, that's white, they're recording.
Okay, so we have the police station that's built and I know that there are issues with it, certain things weren't done right. Um, and that's, I definitely don't wanna see that happen with. Um, and I guess, I have a, my question to Dennis would be, you guys have already been in. The trailer all this time. And you guys able, do you think you guys would be able to, you know, let that be for a little while longer? And then have an actual, you know, nice facility, not just nice, but like you said, usable facility. You know, that helps you guys get done what you need to get done and then, um, allow us for a little bit more expansion. What would you, would you guys sort of look it out and then tell what you actually need later on? Or would you rather do it where you have something temporary and then?
I, I, I personally would actually, do those, spend money on something for us temporarily or, you know. Um, and focus that money more on the permanent solution, uh, you know, we, we've been surviving in those trailers since, you know. Originally as the addition on the, on the park building was supposed to be our shop, so, um, we've been surviving. I'd be sticking money into the current facility, that's like throwing it into a bonfire. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's all up to the board, um, I'm not trying. I by no means am trying to get a facility that is a Taj Mahal or, or the latest and greatest, uh, facility with all the gadgets. I am just trying to get my guys into a facility that fits them comfortably, is safe, um, you know. Isn't an eyesore when people walk past it, um, I, I really, you put me in a concrete box with a couple of windows, I'd be fine. It's not, I'm not looking for, you know, anything special, uh, I just wanna improve the efficiencies of my department. Um, the safety and the well-being of my employees, that's really all it comes down to. I've cut the, cut this building down as much as I can with, with the architects. Uh, you know, I, I, I feel like I'm, you know, fighting a battle that's never-ending, but, um. Yeah, I would hate to spend money somewhere else just to give us temporarily, especially in the financial situation where.
Yes, kind of where it's like pretty much where I live at, but I didn't wanna speak for you and you.
I appreciate, I appreciate them, you know, thinking of that and caring and like, let's get them out of there. Um, you know, I, I, that's gonna be up to the entire board to decide, but I, me personally, I would, that's not the way I like to operate. Uh, the department, I would just hate to spend money on something that is. And what the cost of that could be, it could be, it could be very expensive. Um, you know, you could be talking a million dollars for a different facility to move us into or something, you know, it's gonna be a big building. It's, you know, to house our stuff, even if it doesn't, even if it's not the size that we need, it, you know, it could just, just talk in offices and, you know. I don't know if it would be in the can of shop, you know, what this facility would be, but you could be talking some big money for a temporary situation.
Yeah, having been through, uh, what a trainer talks about, making sure you prepare and build a facility that's gonna be purpose-built for the town. Twenty years down the road is very important, although some of the short-sighted decisions that were made at the time when the PG was constructed. That now, you know, we're only twenty-five years into that building, so we've been battling for space and repurposing rooms that we've maxed out every quarter in that facility. And now, you know, at some point, long after I'm gone, or there's immediate decisions, how to address that, is the community to continue to grow. At, at a rather substantial cost, that would, that, you know, your, your police department construction costs now are averaging between seventeen and twenty-three million. Probably to get into a, a permit for the size of our community. So while it's a big, big number to write a check for to build a current facility for Dennis, been hitting his, his department. The long-term savings are, are gonna be substantial to build it right now versus building it again thirty years from now, or trying to add on to the thirty years from now. So you gotta, you gotta kind of be careful to strike that balance of, of cost and efficiency with making sure that you're not gonna run out of space very quickly.
Good talk, yeah, good talk.
You're welcome, good talk.
If you don't want stairs, like, uh, please.
Yeah, um, so, like, good.
So I guess, you know, we have some direction here, we need to get to all these items, do you wanna go through?
No, these are the primary.
These are the primary, and then, um, so I guess Dennis, the next round is, you tell these guys to, like, give us some, guys, Williams, to give us some real numbers of the village hall. Give us some parameters of the public works and then let's hopefully come back to afford the women.
December thirteenth.
Even as soon as thirteenth, we can get some, like, something for the cow that they'll look at. And then Grim Road is a bigger, bigger item, um, Ashley, you know, what do we? Do you know what we need to do, we have acquired a property, start getting some progress on grants and things of that nature for that road? You know, like, how this grant process works for, um, the public builders, that, anything?
Yeah, so HR Green, so the council and mayors, from what I understand, um, they only open up a window and you have to. The best case is to have basically a, a project that is shovel red. And then, and then it has to meet certain criteria, so we weren't eligible to submit Grim Road the last go-around, which. I forget the, the dates and, and the cutoffs when the submitable was, it may have been last fall, so. I think, I believe that HR Green, um, and I, I do have a meeting with them, hopefully maybe after Thanksgiving. But they're, uh, driving some of these grants that, uh, as I had shown as a bucket. And the council and mayors is one that's, um, on their radar to submit, uh, the plans and the, the engineer's opinion of probable costs and so forth. And then hopefully we would get that project.
And it's been my understanding too, that we haven't been elected for a project yet in quite some time, so I think that that might, um, enhance the probability of receiving projects.
One more project that's due yesterday, I would have put on everybody's radar, and I think it goes in the priority category. Amy, remember, the four on the list is, uh, the SCADA upgrade, which is, uh, uh, all the. Computer, super made that controls our, uh, water system, so why do you talk about that? Cause that's, I, I was told that's a half a million dollar number.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so, uh, Amy and Jason, uh, worked on, uh, basically evaluating our, our current SCADA system, which. Basically what the SCADA system does is it, uh, it communicates between equipment, uh, well towers, uh, pumps. These are, these, these, they call PLCs and radios, but they're put at these certain locations, so they're. Throughout our wastewater treatment plant, at our sanitary lift stations and at our, uh, well and power facilities. And these pieces of equipment basically communicate back to a telephone or a computer. It allows staff, uh, especially supervisor staff, to be able to monitor any alarms, um, if they need to shut a pump off. If there's a situation within, um, the, the treatment of, of the train from, whether it's like the treatment, uh, facility from the beginning to the end. If there's some type of obstruction or something's not basically running in sync, uh, it allows them to monitor it. And then make adjustments as needed or, uh, check to see if an alarm is an actual alarm that needs attention immediately in person or they can handle it via the phone. Um, that's, uh, that's just come up as the system has been evaluated. Both between the water and wastewater treatment plant, uh, we're looking at fifteen to twenty-year-old equipment. Um, we're being told by the consultant that, you know, their, majority of the equipment is near the end of life. Um, the radios are a, I think that was a three hundred thousand dollar number. Those are becoming obsolete and possibly gonna fail. Um, so it was, it was a shock to us, but not, um, we didn't, the, the price was more of a shock. We didn't think that the price was gonna escalate to that amount, um, so that's an item that's come up and they, they face it over, I believe, the next three years. Where we've tried to, you know, do a little bit this year, a little bit next year, the radios, like I said, was a big expensive, they paid a three hundred thousand dollar number on that. So that I think was in phase two.
What was, we're involved with the system, great.
I think it was, it was roughly about half a million dollars, um, there was a three hundred, a fifty thousand.
So for phase two, uh, which was the radio replacement was sixty thousand and then the PLCs were three hundred and eight thousand for phase three. Um, plus then there was some additional software updates that are, um, needed.
How much is phase one?
Uh, phase one is about, uh, thirty-five thousand and, and that is for hardware and stuff, which the majority is already in this year's budget.
So we gotta keep our budget. Forgot where it's about.
That, that'll come with that annual capital replacement, you know, that will have.
And then, and, and we would probably, I'm not speaking for finance, but, uh, it's all related to water and sewer, so. We can utilize a whole water and sewer fund, we can match a whole fund.
Thank you.
I remember, I remember when we got the first SCADA, we had a beard, I don't think. Yeah, I, I forgot, uh, Mr. Andy asked me if I could say, do we say something? Yeah, public, public comment, I said, yes, I forgot, I should have.
No, I, I mean, I, I can talk later too.
No, no, no. I just wanna mention a few things on, on our, on the Vaniac Streets and I appreciate, uh, the help. Dramatically get that help and hopefully this is, but a lot of stuff that we've heard, you know, and I agree that this Public Works. I've heard of blasphemy, that you're losing employees because of the building, and the facility's terrible. Um, our streets were put in in ninety-six and ninety-eight, um, going on twenty-five, twenty-eight years and, um, have not been resurfaced. And a lot of words used, uh, for money in a, in a bonfire, right, that, that's a pavement going into these potholes, we feel doing exactly the same. Um, I had a meeting in two thousand and ten stating that we knew that two thousand and ten, that these current property roads had another ten to fifteen years left. We're approaching year fourteen, um, so we're at end of life of these roads. With them being twenty-five, twenty-eight years old, in those meetings, it also stated that, uh, they have a life expectancy of fifteen to eighteen years. So if we know that they're gonna be eighteen years, life expectancy back in ninety-five, ninety-six, and those are originally constructed correctly.
So, we know that they're gonna be eighteen years, life expectancy, see back in ninety-five, ninety-six, and those are originally constructed correctly. We know that they weren't put in correctly, they're sitting on top of clay, uh, we are ten years beyond, uh, that, that expectation, so, um, again, we're not looking for the sun tomorrow, we would just like to have that be a priority. Four hundred grand, take that in a heartbeat, and just have that phase approach over the next four or five years, uh, would be fantastic. We'd love to have that, but also, uh, that two-point-five number, I saw that number, um, when I went to the gym, it was a little bit less than that, like two-point-one-seven-six, so it's a little bit more feasible, maybe that five years, or four years, but again, uh, I just wanna mention that, and if we could work on some type of priorization, four of those roads would be helpful for us. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
All of those homeowners have been paying motor fuel tax, um, all these road and bridge, um, under tax, those drivers. And, and I know it's all the roads, you know, like, um, they're paying for all the roads, but this is a pass-through neighborhood from Wisconsin, from Tiffany Farms, um, from west of town, downward avenue, and I, I used to live in that neighborhood, I lived there twenty years, but I have to go through that neighborhood is unbelievable, getting toward town, and it's, you know, we really need to make it a priority to fix those roads before someone really does.
If someone has to cut, we, a girl that I mentioned at last meeting, she put her over her scooter, she knocked on her foot, but, uh, it's gotten to the point where that's happening, and a mom is willing to come and talk to the board and help that, is it? But, uh, kid that popped his tire, riding a bike, put over his handlebars, there's, there's stuff that's happening where our kids can't cross the street, you go over the sidewalk, it's, um, a hard thing, right? And I don't wanna take away from anything on the big project side, we would tell, uh, but, four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars a year for the next four or five years, I think this would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. What, what information would, uh, staff finance? Everybody here at staff level, what else would you need from trustees today as far as direction? This is helpful, where are people to see these numbers, and to know where the money is, to know that we're not, we're not playing any games, it is, uh, also except reserve money, and these numbers, this thirty-one million is taking a bunch of money and putting it aside, and then, we also know that, uh, next year, as we go to the budget, we'll be talking about SCADA, we're gonna talk about putting money in the parks, um, I will probably encourage another one of these roundtable-type meetings in February, whether it's in the evening or afternoon, I, I know it's hard for people to work, but I also, you know, for the staff on weekends, or, you know, extra evenings, too, so, we'll do something in February, uh, uh, on a just strictly a budget meeting, where we'll talk about these other capital items, and then, a few more traditional, our department heads present their items, and major items, or anything that's ten percent changed, or something along those lines, so we will go through that process. All right?
There's one more thing, uh, Zeta committed to trustee Mason, if she's gonna send the copy for the, for the bond. Uh, can you also, is there a map that actually maps out the proper areas of that, of that bond, that?
Yeah, but, but this is.
I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to know, because, you know, one of the questions I had was, was the problem with kids, and I have been told since it was, you know. So, I just wanna make sure, if I look, you know, visually, the other, the, uh.
There was something else.
Yeah.
Another document request, I'm here, uh, sure, we'll go down.
The road program map?
The road program map, yeah, just make sure we say like that, too. Uh, you need, you have to build it to be colored, because I think there's a color coded by the urgency or sections, correct? Uh, yeah, it depends on. Shows how many years life they have. Yeah, yeah, there's a few different. Okay, oh, let me, um, for the record, uh, why don't we just want to update, uh, the, uh, slides, so, we can talk about it during. Uh, we had, we had something pop up this week, which, uh, Dennis couldn't tell you. Yeah, so, um, originally, I announced at staff that, uh, the ICC and the FRA came through on Tuesday, and uh, near the end of day Tuesday, uh, they have completed, uh, the inspection of basically all the crossings uh, within our responsibility, and then late, and they didn't have any issues, um, that needed to be addressed. And then late Tuesday, I got an email, uh, maybe nine o'clock, from the ICC about high school, so, pedestrian crossing there, they had, uh, and they're inspecting that, and a vehicle drove over the tracks going back to the field, so, I threw up a red flag because it is designated as a pedestrian crossing and not, uh, vehicle crossing. So, uh, we were lucky to get a meeting with the superintendent, um, uh, yesterday, and by one o'clock, I put concrete, uh, placed concrete barriers there, so, and sent pictures back to, uh, the property, so.
Just, just real quickly, one, one conversation, and Brett will probably back this up if he's not too bored to talk. Uh, when we were at the, I am, our meeting down in Chicago, we talked with the commerce commission, uh, on the trains and stuff, and one thing they posed, they, they had funds for specific projects, like pedestrians, corridors, and stuff like that, that they were begging people to submit plans for, and, and an idea that came to me was, maybe it's time, instead of worrying about having a bridge or, or the traffic, maybe they could do a little rerouting of the pathway, and make a pedestrian corridor underneath the train track, where we never have to worry about a student, or a teacher, or a parent, or a grandparent, being hit by a train as they're crossing over the footpath there. So, I think that's something the boards should look at, then, since it's obviously, uh, school property and stuff, kind of talk to them.
We'll look at, put that ashes, uh, and rant, so. Anybody that's eager to say something, speak now, or, then, anybody?
I'd just like to say one more thing, as long as it's gonna be a pedestrian crossing like there, the high school should be involved, and with two government agencies working together, if they love that, so, um, that might, might help as well, bringing the high school into it, too.
Yeah, are, are you calling the needs of the land? Wait, so, yeah, okay, we got other stuff to cover though. Um, yeah, but I think it's, uh. Yeah, all right, so.
I have nothing to do with the projects, but, um, I was gonna send an email for it, I think most people present. If you have any questions regarding the audit, could you please send it to me, so I can send it to, um, the auditor, so I can review my only four part, only one, four part, it's not my report.
At this point?
So, yeah, so you could just, like, send me your questions, and I'll have the auditor respond, um, because, to me, I'm just, because I don't think this is supposed to be that kind of thing. So, would you guys just give me feedback back in the break? Thank you.
So, I, uh, I make a motion to, uh, during this meeting, go to executive session, it's not a German, it's going to be that, but. And with, with potential, uh, action that takes place after.
More personnel.
More personnel, any other reason? Yes, would, would, I don't, no, I'm probably the first.
Someone?
I like it, I don't see one in the whole executive session. Yeah, I'm second. I think we've been saying that, because by the time we went to the last executive session, I was home, phone call for all of the time.
Well, let's say I was on something.
I don't, I don't think that's an executive session, just.
I think, I think we should go into the second.
I have a, a motion, trustee Peterson's second, does he make this roll call?
Berman? Yes. Luthard?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
For voting, yes, I want to vote for one executive session at, uh, three fifty. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we're unmuted.
All right, um, it is four oh two, um, we're out of the executive session, um, I'd like to call a regular meeting, back to order. Do a roll call, please.
Trustee Berman?
Here.
Trustee Luthard?
Here.
Trustee McNeil?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Peterson? Here, Mayor Gert.
Here, so, um, you're back in, um, I would like to, uh, uh, have a motion to take item G on the agenda, and, uh, move that to a, um, special meeting this coming Wednesday at four thirty PM. Um, so I have a motion, a second for that item.
Someone?
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luthard?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right, six voting, yes, motion carries, um, secondly, because it's a special meeting, we'll be limited to only discussing items that are on the agenda. Are there any other items that any of the trustees wish to be added to that agenda, uh, that either? Other than what, the discussion of item G, uh, the potential of executive session, is there any other items that need to be added? If not, um, then I, I take, uh, energy and motion during this meeting. Oh, motion trustee Mason, second trustee Pierce, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned at four oh three, which is.